In the joint town council special meeting and budget committee meeting of Thursday, April 20, 2023, 11:07. With that, Ms. Shepherd, will you call a roll?
Tim Slocum.
Here.
Don Walsh.
Here.
David Borwey. David Velber. Jim Jakes.
Here.
Sandy Pobana.
Here.
Sylvia Nichols. Peter Talbott.
Here.
Bob Mylum.
Yes.
Forum is present.
I pledge to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which sustains, one nation under God, indivisible, liberate and justice for all.
Okay, we will entertain motion to move into executive session to include everyone in the room regarding the property acquisition.
So with the exception of Mike and.
That's true.
And then he's gonna stay. Oh, then he's gonna stay, okay. With the exception of Mike and Jim is staying?
Yes.
Okay.
Yes. So with that.
Second.
Terrific.
So there's a rough draft of something with the mill rate calculator that Sean's worked very hard on, Jim, I know had a lot of input on that, or that got a lot of calls because Sean was away for a day or two.
And. Smart man.
But I think, yeah. But I think we've got a good talking point and a good beginning point to plus or minus from. So with that, Sean Oleski, do you wanna, what are you looking for?
I need Mike.
You only need a dime.
Oh, okay. I'm not gonna watch. Uh, okay. I just, oh, I need a packet to go off of the, I can pull up. Well, I can go off.
Did you want to cover the electronic version?
Well, are we, I think we're gonna do the quick follow-up first, if that's all right.
Exactly.
Yep.
Please.
And then, alright, so.
Do you wanna take this?
How, what order do you have them? That's the only, I don't have the order of the handouts, sorry. Okay.
Um, you have to share now. You've got a whole bunch of tech talities.
So, yeah, some of these are, oh, this is. It's going out. That's all right. I don't wanna be over nervous, guys.
That's the other, yeah, that's, that's the one.
So a lot of sheets here.
They printed stuff.
Yeah.
Okay, alright, alright. Okay, that's, alright, so what you have, alright, so a few just follow-ups from prior budget workshops, thanks for bearing with me here. You'll see the file, the document that looks like this.
Yep.
Yeah, we don't need to go in any real detail, but the question was asked about the list of equipment, servers, workstations, wireless devices, and their purchase date, replacement date, schedules, and then sort of, are they tracked, how are they tracked? And so we just wanted to distribute that. I did, the black lines are because I blacked out the actual serial numbers and names for security purposes, which I distributed everywhere, so there's nothing really to go into in great detail here unless there's any further questions. Happy to send this electronic if anybody wants to see.
Bottom line is, we have a lot.
Bottom line is, we have a lot, and we also have a schedule and a replacement plan, and it's very well managed by Apex, our RIT team. So there's no questions on that one follow-up, let's kinda move to the next. And this is probably sort of the beginning of a little more of a conversation, but you'll have two items, one was a request for, we had the renewal analysis that the town and Board of Ed get from USI, that's sort of this documented colored picture here on the cover. Again, just kind of some of the analysis that goes into building and the rate setting for our self-funded program, but kind of more relevant, and what we asked for, the council asked for, is this one pager that's horizontal. This is, they did go to Cigna to build a fully insured quote for the town. You'll see there's three columns, there's the current self-insured, there's our renewal there, that's where the renewal began in the process, with the total expected cost of $19.9 million. And then what they, what we requested from Cigna was a fully insured alternative through Cigna, where we would not be self-funding our claims anymore. And that quote came back, and we have a full quote document if anyone wants to see, it's a lengthy document, how they built this number, happy to forward that on. It should have a one pager, there it is. Sorry, I apologize, I went out of order. It's, as you'll see there, it's about $3.3 million more than our estimate for our costs by self-funding the program. Again, I know this is a topic that we'll be discussing more as we'll be having a subcommittee kind of look further into our medical benefits trust, as mentioned by Chairman Self, at the last meeting, but I just wanted to provide this follow-up to one of the requests from prior.
Can I just ask, would your self-insured though could go below that potentially if people don't, or is that self-insured?
Right.
So that could even drop below that?
If we didn't have the claims.
If we didn't have the claims too, but the other one is standard, that's, that's, that's a fixed number.
Right, the other one is set, I mean, the other, the self-funded one, as we've experienced, can go both ways, right? Basically, you know, the upward liability, we, we have stop-loss insurance that hedges that against significant spikes, but, yeah, the general assumption, obviously, insurance companies are in the business of making money, they hedge in a fully insured product that they have enough buffer there that they can withstand and pay profits right on any claim. So the theory behind self-funding, unless you just have really a bad run of luck for multiple years, but even with a fully insured product, they're just gonna raise your rates and say, you've had bad experience, you're not gonna see that as a savings other than maybe one year where you might say, well, it's a good thing we weren't self-funded this year, but the insurance company's gonna save you, next year will raise your rates regardless.
If we took a number like that for the last five years, and that was our number, how, for the last five years, have we always, it seems like we've always gone above that, is that correct?
On the town side, in terms of why we've built up this balance, so we have about a seven, six or seven months of a balance.
Okay, so.
Because we've experienced in those recent years, and we've had bad years too, but in our most recent years, we've had favorable experience.
Yeah, the town side has been a little better, yeah.
It's always tight.
Just, I mean, it's all.
Three years, this has been a budget problem.
Yeah. Yeah.
Yeah.
So a follow-up on that, just to make sure I'm clear about this, when we self-insured, we pay an additional policy as the stop-loss insurance, over and above this amount.
That's correct.
But in this fully insured, you know, I think there would be no additional amount for stuff, I mean, how does that work if the claims exceed a certain number? I mean, because, so this number of $19,000 that we're paying, it does not include the stop-loss insurance, correct?
It does, doesn't it?
Or doesn't it?
175, yeah, just.
Okay.
Stop-loss is in each one of them.
Oh, I'm sorry, I didn't see that.
Uh, no, that, well, that's the stop-loss rate, I mean, that's the SSL, the specific stop-loss.
Yeah.
That's not the coverage.
So it's.
I mean, I'm assuming it's included in that 23 million.
It is, okay, okay, I just wanted to make sure.
They're saying they're doing, whereas otherwise we have enough to track.
Sure, got it.
Yeah, I, I.
Why do they have it in the fully insured, why do they even have a stop-loss in the full insured? Why would that, why would that, why would that?
Why would they need that if you're fully insured?
They're showing that they're covering it themselves, so it's showing that it is covered, whereas it compares apples to apples, because right now, we have it and it has to be a separate item, we'll have it with that plan and it won't be a separate item. See, they're saying Cigna's gonna cover it, it looks like they're covering the other.
But the 175 is included in the 19.
In the third column, they don't need to have.
That's not a cost, is it? That's, that's the 175 is if they go over.
It's over those claims.
So anything over 175.
I think it is insured separately. So even how it's fully insured.
Do we know what they ensure that senses?
That's what I think what we're asking.
But their cost, is that a cost to fully insure separately totals 23?
You say, is there a different number for the, that we pay for the stop-loss insurance?
They do track it, yeah.
So that's in addition to the 19 million?
No, 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 no.
No.
That, that 19 million is included.
Yes, well, I'm sorry, I answered too quickly. In the, that 19,902814, that does include the stop-loss premium, but it's paid to a different entity.
Okay.
It's paid to CT Prime.
But it's in there, so that's, it's still a total cost.
So it's apples to apples.
Alright, that's enough.
And really, this conversation tonight is just to give us.
Got it.
A base and a understanding of what it could be today, more expensive to go, no matter what we do, we're not doing what's most efficient, we're not choosing between whether we go alternative or not, I mean.
No, just understanding.
We're gonna study this further because.
Absolutely.
USI just looked at it, they didn't necessarily go out and price it, they just came up with one price, is that right?
I'm assuming they went to Cigna to get the quote.
They went straight to Cigna.
Yeah.
One point, right.
It's not, it hasn't been shocked.
Yeah, I think it's worth still studying, I think.
Oh, I, I think so, and we may come back with a very similar answer.
For this year, we're not.
I know, I had asked the water authority, you know, you know, why are we, why are we, you know, are all public agencies self-insured and most private's not? And the answer was, they had gone out, I think they said five years ago, and done some analysis and came back with the same thing, it made, it didn't make sense for them to change, it's a much smaller organization employee-wise than Cheshire is, you know? But that was an answer from a public agency other than a town that does it, and, but again, they did do it, I think it's due diligence to do that sort of thing to arrive at an answer, and, and I do think it requires more depth, and, and I also think it's just maybe a sign that makes sense, but I think we should do it like with a totally clean slate, with knowing we're involved in, with now, is involved on this long as we're mentioned, but I would leave that up for the study group that gets formed, that's my estimation of what we should do, you know, just for the heck of it, so it's, so it's a truly blind study.
But this tells us in the short term, at least as we're making decisions today, we need to stay the course, there's no.
We don't have an option.
We're nowhere near prepared to change.
And it may or may not look like it's gonna save a lot of money, but it's well worth looking at because it's not as far away as it could be.
Right, and, and it needs the time, and we need to start this, you know.
Yeah, because there's contracts to negotiate, so you can't just change it for part of the bargaining.
So we appreciate the show.
Thank you.
More to come.
More to come for sure.
$1 million, isn't it?
Alright, so the next item in the package, this was a request, I think, this is the amount of revenue that is coming to the document preservation, these green investment act and MERS funding, I know Arnett, you were gonna talk.
Yeah, Peter had asked that question at the last meeting, just the amount.
This is kind of, that was a quote?
So is that?
And now we're not with that subject.
Laura did send it.
Oh, she did?
Yeah.
Okay.
Peter, as I'm going through these, I'll give these back to you, so you have your own card in there. The next item, a question was asked about the locations of the time clocks at our last RIT meeting, we were discussing the time of attendance, so Jim confirmed and put together the seven proposed locations, and the, you know, you'll note that the town hall, others, there's some facilities that are more conducive for, you do a geofence sort of web login as opposed to a keycard pass system, so the plan would be, in the initial rollout at least, that folks would either use a smart device or their laptop, because those folks all have, everybody in this building has their workstation that you can log your time in, as opposed to folks that come in and don't have a working workstation area, that's why these seven identified, mentioned.
The town hall would not be included, of course.
Yeah, the town hall, yeah, so I think I did misspeak maybe at the prior, without this information on my fingertips last time, that the town hall wouldn't be included because, although the system would be in existence and at everybody's workstation, and again, there's things, you can either do those geofences because you're at a computer logged into the network here, or if they're on their device, you can make sure it's within, so someone's not in Aruba saying, I'm punching into work.
Could I ask or suggest that we revisit this when we talk about that, the technology budget as a whole?
Sure.
Because this is part of that, correct?
Well, it is, yeah, this is.
And I think that was a subject to a number of conversations that have taken place since the last met, just as my opinion, you think, share.
Yeah.
Share that with Peter too. Thank you. Say, for instance, there's, you know, you use CenterHelp at Mixville or something like that, they would just use your phones? I think that's correct, again, it depends on, so, yeah, I, I think for certain ones, they, you know, they may just use, prior system would have to come off, or you could have a laptop out there and get that, one of the Wi-Fi devices.
Yeah, we have to work something out, but. Will there be Wi-Fi in the new building over there?
We, I don't think there's any planned currently, there is connectivity at the guardhouse at Mixville, and then we also have used, we have these Nighthawk Wi-Fi devices that we've used to.
Why just no bacteria?
Sometimes pretty bad with receptions, yeah, we did have to get, we used the Nighthawk there for the first season of COVID when we had the new gate there, and then we were able to get internet connectivity out there. So I think that's all you should have in your package, I apologize for, if there's anything else in there? Good. So I think other than that, I think now the discussion would be kind of recap of where we are on the budget.
Alright, well, where we are and where we have, what we have accumulated in terms of adjustments and discussions that we've had, to get us forward, we put something on paper as a draft, just to see where different departments would have different adjustments to them, where the mill rate would adjust, there was quite a bit of complications in the mill rate because about 12% of the budget is the vehicles, which is fixed, so when you adjust it to go down one mil, you only need about $2.5 million, not $3 million. So the draft is gonna show one mil reduction from what the town manager had recommended, so it'd be a .7 or about 2% increase, and it's going to use a little more fund balance, I mean, we, he was, quite frankly, I did very little in the first go-around, it's going to be a reduction of, just to get started, for discussion purpose, because we have to put something down, $150,000 to the general town government, but there's a caveat that there's an adjustment to that, $400,000 from the Board of Ed, but there's some potential revenue or savings and expenses that may help them offset some of that, there's some use of the ARPA funds for the two projects that we've been talking about, they're, but they're added to the expense side as well, so that those are really just a wash, but it's good to get them in the budget so that we can have a discussion, decide whether we wanna do that or not. There is also, it was 800,000, no, $700,000 in fund balance, we're expecting a surplus of over 2.6 million, the budget originally included 1.2 million, or less than half of that in fund balance, we're looking at adjusting it to be 2 million, which is still less than the surplus, so surplus will grow, very important to that, several factors of what the credit rating agencies told us a couple weeks ago are in this, they're saying that, well, nine and a quarter, nine and a half percent is our target rate for fund balance, we're at 12%, 12 and a half percent, we would still be at 11.8%, we would still be well over the number that they're looking at, even if we used an additional $700,000 in fund balance. So I, part of this is, I'd like to have us consider changing our policy to be at the 10%, which is what they're recommending, because we're well over that anyway, so it's almost like a hollow victory on their part, but, because we're there. But all this ties in, general government would go down a net, well, do you wanna start with that?
Probably go through each one, yeah.
Yeah, let's go.
That's easier, I know there's a lot of.
And then plus it reminds us, please, let's speak up, we're in a small room on purpose so that we can have, you know, some real good discussions here, but the interesting one here is, general town government is gonna be about 150,000, 157,000, I think it was, in reductions that he would, that town manager would make to his departments if we so ordered that that be the number they could spend. The difference is, we were using 189,495,000 of the fund balance that the pool had, because they had grown quite a balance, that way we didn't have to fund it as much, and I'm quite nervous about that because it's creating a flip for next year. So, well, we had some better news on some other tax revenues, which we'll be getting to, that we knew last week at our last meeting, I thought it was a very good idea to cut that almost in half to surround numbers and say, alright, we're gonna take $100,000 of the fund balance this year from the pool enterprise fund in order to not have to spend as much of our general town government funds, I explain it right?
That's correct, yeah, I mean, this was a discussion, I know, when we went through the pool budget, some councils raised the concern that, are we taking too much of fund balance, that, that great news, but are we taking too much of that in one year versus spreading it over multiple years, so.
And that money, that money is then available for projects if we need it, or to use next year, and if it grows, which, you know, seems to be the case, outdoors after COVID, had a lot of outdoor activities that really flourished, and not just here, but other places, so I think that's, that's prudent, but what that would mean to the general town government, and the 150 will be delineated on another spreadsheet, but what that would mean is the, a net of 61, but I'm, I'm looking at it as that's an enterprise fund for the pool, so I'm looking at it as still a reduction, the Sean's requested town government of $150,000, and then we're also making a change in the pool, so I, I'm not really looking at it as just a reduction of 61,000 for general town government.
So what are the reductions?
To get to 150, do you wanna go to that?
I'd like to, or we're already applying.
Yep, so can everyone see, I can't, I finally have it duplicated so I can see here, let me know if it's not clear, so these are the proposals, and they differ slightly, I think, from, by rounding from what we discussed table when we first had the numbers, because I wanted to true them up to the actual amounts that each one would save, so again, in this case, each of these positive numbers are savings, and I'll discuss one other small item that I added to this as I was finishing it up, the, I'll go through each one, so in the police department, since the time the budget was put together, we've had a couple of separations, retirements, each one of those come with a replacement of a new officer at a lower salary step, so this first number, that actually ends up totaling with the, the ones that we now know, about $32,269 that we can safely remove from the budget. Animal control, similarly, the deputy animal control officer separated, and we're hiring a new one, that will be a step one, and the savings will be $4,047. Public works, similarly, that we've had budgeted, the retirement incentive in the budget that's in the union contract, and we now know the employees that are taking advantage of, of the retirement incentive, and ultimately, that nets out about $21,000 of savings for those replacing, it's a little less because they only have three steps in their contracts, and new, new employees don't come in, quite the gap you see in the police department, but the $21,000 is the savings there of just, we can take that now versus where, when I prepared the budget, information we have now about retirements. This next item is, we've had a, we had a separation of a records clerk, full-time records clerk in the police department, in discussions with the chief, that's a position that the last person that was in the position was able to really modernize and bring in some new technology and new spreadsheets and things in terms of getting the work done in the morning, this is the early shift at 7:00 AM, does a lot of the records that are necessary for court, and I am proposing, and the chief agrees, that, that we can do this, reducing that from a 35-hour position to a 20-hour part-time position, that would reduce, again, three hours per day, so instead of seven-hour days, it'd be four hours, probably from 7:00 AM to 11:00 AM, that's a savings of $25,110, and again, I did confirm with Chief Drive that, that he, he's okay with that, he might take that savings and make that change. With all of those salary reductions and assumptions above, there's corresponding town share of social security savings that actually total about $28,000 in social security contributions saved with, with these changes, and I think maybe.
Plus the alternatives that you made when you.
Plus the ones that I made in my budget, we did not adjust the social security number at the time that I presented, so anything that was requested, social security number was in there, but when I cut and removed the budget, we didn't adjust the social security number at that time, so that is what totals the 28,000, thank you, Jim. Moving to IT, we just, we just were saying this is a good time to talk about, two proposals here, one is on the fiber project, we had extensive follow-up conversations with Apex, the rollout of fiber that was being proposed as those new additions to the budget included hooking in the WPCD and then Firehouse 2 and 3, that was a request just because they're on, they have internet, they have broadband internet, Firehouse 2 and 3 are kind of less of a priority, from time to time, there are trainings there and some other things that should service be intermittent, but they're existing, it could present some pickups and issues, but, you know, the main Firehouse, the police, town hall, we're all on the fiber network now, I would propose, if we're looking for the budget savings here to get to 150,000, that we do the WPCD in the first year, but we phase Firehouse 2 and 3 as not being as critical for rolling out fiber, and that would save $16,780. I mentioned the IT reduction in the workstation replacements, we talked about that a little bit as I distributed the existing schedule, I had increased that number from about $20,000 to $60,000, so this would still be an increase over what we had this year for laptop and device replacements, but I would, I would support reducing that number by $15,000 and $45,000 for those purchases this year.
So Sean, in connection with that, if you guys remember, you were looking at 315 or 357,000 on that whole list of papers, so that doesn't seem a whole lot, so, but, when I talked to Steve Carroll, and, you know, he, I mean, what he thought was okay, we didn't want to cut it in half and be okay, it was very, you know, accommodating in the conversation we had, but he really did think we should also talk to Apex, and I took it upon myself to emphasize that I thought we should definitely incorporate the payroll stuff, you know, time clock stuff, and if you recall at our last meeting, thank you, Bill.
I have a Board of Ed meeting.
I just threw a completely.
But I brought it David's number than Michael's, I mean, than John's number.
Point taken.
That was a Freudian slip, I can't believe.
So getting back to the, the time clock and the salary, all that stuff, I had thought, and you would, you would suggest it at the other meeting, that that could be maybe something you're waiting here.
Yeah, before I had gone through the.
Right, and then I thought, since, since I got in the room, was that, that just seems like it's awfully efficient, inefficient, why would we wanna wait on that? So that's why, you know, cutting it in half doesn't seem feasible if you're gonna leave that in there, so if someone disagrees on that, that number can grow, or if we can, what you do, you need to talk about.
No, I, I actually, I think it's so inefficient the way we're doing time cards right now, I mean, that, we're, that's the 20th century, we're in the 21st century, and it's time for us to move, move forward with that.
And it's department heads.
And I gotta, I gotta think that it's gonna save them time, I mean, right? It's gonna save you time, but it saves everybody time, I, I think it's just more efficient.
But it's not gonna save them time, because it's still gonna be done the same way it's being done now at the town hall, right?
No, the town hall's doing time cards, handwritten. Yeah, so, just to clarify that, right now, everything's handwritten.
You can handwrite time cards.
Board of Ed has been doing the, the.
You have no, no, okay.
Except for the police department has a, and the public works department has a actual physical punch clock, and then it gets translated onto.
Manual.
Manual, onto the unit.
Which is what I used to have in my car.
So this would incorporate both time.
It's pretty long, we're still counting like Greg or Sirius.
Right, and this would incorporate both time and attendance, which I didn't highlight as much at the last meeting, but the tracking of available leave time, sick time, vacation time, and that, that's also a cumbersome process, paper, obviously, it's tracked in units once it's uploaded, but the translating of that time and employees' available balances are not readily accessible.
I think we need efficiency, and then that's, that's one thing that's extremely efficient, and I can't see taking that out, if I knew that five years ago, I would say, why aren't we doing that? I mean, most big businesses have gone to this way 20 years ago, and this is a big business here.
And that was one of the things that the tax study group totally supported.
Yeah, no, I can understand, probably banging their heads against the wall saying, what? It's in the paper.
Steve definitely thought that shit, he did, so.
Some of the workstation replacement purchases line there, that I seem to recall, that was much larger this year than previous year. It was, yeah, certainly, it had been down to about $20,000, and last year, I had, I requested 60,000 last year, I think it was one of those that I cut 40,000 last year, down to 20, the reality is, you know, 20,000 is really only 10 laptops or so, and we have a need for more, we talked with Corey about, kind of, 40,000 is a good number for replacements in any one year, you know, we requested 60 because ultimately, we'd like to be on a path where it's about 50 to 60,000 a year, but these are on an as-needed basis, and if we can extend the, the life of some of the devices, you know, these are separate from any of the bigger IT initiatives that we fund through the capital budget, large wireless access point deployment, and all the things that we talked about, this is really more devices like this one that we have across our two. So actually, this 50,000 reduction, you're at 45 now? It'd be about 40, 45,000.
And I see on here, you have 62 items that are past replacement date, according to this, 62 people.
Yeah.
The 45,000, how many of those would that cover?
I wouldn't know specifically.
Not nearly a quarter of them, probably.
Yeah, but, and then, it's not to say they're all necessarily, yeah, and, and again, I Yeah, but, and then, it's not to say they're all necessarily, yeah, and again, I would certainly defer to Apex, they certainly monitor all of those, and some devices can last longer than their expected three or five years, so-
I'm just looking at what their replacement date-
They thought it was reasonable.
Yeah, they did, yeah, but in terms of dollar for dollar, what could be on there? I just-
Well, a lot of them are these off-replaced, thirty-ten's are-
It's also possible some of those on the list are not being, some of them may not be being used, or maybe replacements are in process for some of those now, because we do have some being replaced this year, and our library had some being replaced and some of those, so that list may not be next year's list, it's sort of now's list, and there may be some. So if there's any other, no more IT, we always, I'm sure we'll come back to all of these or any of these, but-
So right now, the clock is staying, the time clock is staying here.
Right, so the time clock, right, so there's no adjustment to the manager's proposed budget, which included the time clock. So the other two items relatively, well, these next two are relatively small, one is a correction, I'm not sure if I brought this up during the town manager's budget briefly, but the ICMA dues line, which is the dues for both Arpa and I, I had mentioned that there was one year I had paid, we missed one, so we double paid, that's why the actuals were higher, but in that process, we neglected to add the thousand dollars that needs to be in this year's budget, it's budgeted at thirteen hundred, and it needs to be at twenty-three hundred, so that's going in the wrong direction, a thousand dollars, but we're trying to make up adjustments.
Something has to be going in the wrong direction like that.
I did make that work before one fifty-one, so a thousand dollars higher than I was, my target. The beautification initiative, I didn't mean to skip over it, this was the twelve-thousand-dollar request that Mr. Martelli presented, I would propose reducing that to ten thousand dollars, so that's a savings.
I would ask Andrew to start reaching out to local businesses to see if they would take on that project, to do it for the twelve, twelve plus, I think we have enough businesses in this town, I mean, you go around Soullington and everywhere else, they have signs, welcome to Soullington, and this area is sponsored by these businesses who take care of those, that property, and I think it's a perfect place, I know Andrew had said, well, you know, we have to fix the irrigation system and all that, but, I mean, we have companies who do irrigation systems in town that maybe would like to have their little name put on a sign there or something, I just think, you know, at this point, we need to, we're the betting capital of Connecticut, we should be utilizing some of the companies that are in our town to help us beautify our town.
I was the one who originally asked Andrew about this, and honestly, I, it's not a big number, and I was really, it was the beginning of the discussion of the budget, and I wanted to be looking for this kind of conceptually approach, that we were looking for opportunities for the back. I don't want to penalize Andrew individually, such a small number, I tend to agree that we can find support for this, I would be less comfortable with completely moving, and I think Andrew could use some seed money there to at least get some things going while he looks for additional donations, so I would, I'm okay with the ten thousand personally, if you wanted to, from twelve to six, I would be not comfortable getting it less than six, because I think he needs something to say, that's a reason. It gets him started, it gets him seed money in, go to business and say, look, I've got-
Does that get him to do the irrigation?
Probably the irrigation for six.
So I think that's probably the showstopper for Andrew.
I haven't paid attention to that part that we was talking about, it looks usually pretty, it looks okay to me generally, but I, you know, I didn't really look at, I don't look at it that carefully, it is an asset.
It could use color, it doesn't have to be color, really, no.
Did he use some fair, you know? So I'd like to not take it all away personally, even though I was the one who brought it up, but I defer to others as to what they feel here.
I agree with you, I think that we need to put our money somewhere, and at least give him some starting place for that, whether it's ten or six or whatever, I think that's fine, but I do agree with Don that there's probably support by businesses, but you can't go to a business without saying, we are committed to this, and by showing that commitment, then they-
And I've already said that I would have our business support that, so we'd be part of that, if Andrew decided going in that direction, so.
I know what kind of objection I sort of have not to the, I have an objection to putting a sign on that property, to be honest. We've got signs at the gateways to Cheshire, I would be reluctant to, just for the benefit of having business do some of it, suddenly you have a gateway sign to Cheshire that's all about a business that's here, because there's no signs there now, other than-
And then you can install regulations-
There's a suburban garden, sorry, I missed that.
I thought there's a sign that says-
I think there's a suburban garden, suburban gardens.
Yeah, I think there is a sign there, it's a brown sign, and Peck Jones Fund, when they dissolved forty years ago, they took the money, started to-
So there's a small, there's a sign there somewhere.
It's not huge, but it's brown, so it blends in.
But a company is gonna want their logo and have some-
I'm not sure, well, I'm agreeing with Tim, I'm not sure we want to do that.
See, that's another thing I was, you know, I don't know if you want to turn it totally over, but I don't know.
I mean, for us, I mean, I'm here about a sign.
We're fighting over pennies and it makes no sense.
Yeah, I don't want the kind of donation where they're gonna think that-
See, I'd rather see us mowing a parcel and watering, and watering a few plants instead of having all these glorious gardens that are just not, they're just not manageable forever.
I don't think that park though, in the corner that we're talking about, is glorious at all, really.
No, it was when the construction was put in here.
Right, but you know, it did have that big old trellis, whatever you call that, it was still there.
No, it's gone, no, it's gone, it's gone.
But it's come down over the years from what it was, but-
These are real assets of the town, the park we have that was never a park, when you come in from the south end of town, is just a tremendous asset. You may not know that I worked with Andrew and Shaw to try and get some land from the one opposite street, and he would not sell the land, he even, you know, and he started, he said, you're gonna love, and I do again, it's a season of the-
I love what he did.
So, it would have been nice to, you know, have that, these are a real asset for the town, have a place, so whatever, whatever everyone wants to do here is fine, I don't think it's a-
To me, it looks very nice.
So that, that was twenty seventeen, so you can see here today, you can, actually with Google now, you can go back in time, different dates.
Was built way back in the nineties, sixty years ago.
So this is twenty twenty-two, September of twenty-two, and then you can go back to twenty seventeen.
And Jones Benny did that, Jones Benny did that.
What was the building that's there?
Marie Hox, Marie Hockes, I forgot, Marie something.
They put in three Japanese maples instead of one, I mean, it happens all the time.
There you go, there used to be sort of more of a-
Right, and it was the beautiful-
Originally, it had a wooden structure in the middle that was purple, it had this area that bloomed, and I mean, it was lovely, it really was, but hard to maintain, and I agree with that, but it could be much better than it is.
If I could speak briefly for Andrew, I'm the TBC, and hopefully accurately, they have a couple of objectives, one of them is to simplify and make it easier to maintain all of these areas, so that it's more efficient to keep them up, and the other one is to make sure that they're aesthetically pleasing, because that adds a really positive element to the town, when you're driving through and you see these beautiful parklets, we would have less highlights or something that's not as beautiful, hopefully.
So is everyone okay with ten?
I was gonna say the same thing, you just said it better.
I'm okay with it, the only thing is, I would still utilize the companies in our town to, you know, come in and plant the flowers or whatever, to add color in the spring and the summer and fall.
Andrew's already done, he's already started reaching out.
Yeah, so that's good, so then that's fine, I mean, I'm fine, but when you're putting a budget plan out now is the time.
And to Don's point, I mean, I think, for me, I think perhaps, as John had mentioned, that maybe, right, this starts the project, and when people see what can happen, that makes, they make it easier, and eventually, maybe we could transition to that, and this building becomes a budget item.
That's good. All right, so we'll leave what the town manager has here for that, then the last item is to get to your hundred.
And the last item, yeah, to move up, again, it's relatively small number, just keep in mind that, you know, in the initial cut of the budget when we had some favorability, I did use, there's a three-hundred-thousand-dollar adjustment from the initial proposal with the medical trust fund, based on the initial renewal that we were comfortable making at the time, so we've had continued good experience this last month, and I'm happy to pull that up on the screen, we did get our March numbers in, and actually, both the town and Board of Ed had a good month without, over the expected claims, so I'm comfortable, again, in this case, it's a little bit of a plug number to get to the one fifty-one, I don't want to take too much more reliance onto the medical trust, if we can avoid it, but in this case, I was comfortable taking eight thousand dollars, bringing this up to one.
So if we want to grow this amount, we can certainly talk about garbageing, correct?
Yeah, right, so not included, this is any adjustment to bulky waste or any other that were proposed.
So, I think, I don't know if I made a proposal, but we considered doing it in a two-year period, to get a price on that, I had shared with you guys later, earlier today, I know there's probably one or two people in the room that think we shouldn't do it, maybe I'm wrong on that, maybe I was, but I thought we shouldn't do it, but that's a lot of money, and I-
Yeah, I don't think we should do it.
So you don't think we should do it?
Correct, this year, or in this budget cycle.
Here's the trouble with doing half, that I have to concede, it's not gonna necessarily be the same people in the room making a promise tonight, that we're gonna do half, we're gonna have, so I have to concede that that's possible, okay?
The new council could screw the other half of it down.
Right, well, and that's the other political calculus, I think that makes sense, because we would all remember that.
I didn't see the half proposal, what's the half proposal?
Oh, I'm sorry, what I get suggested was-
People just say it sometimes.
What I get suggested, only that it, I asked if it had been considered, not suggesting that it was a great idea, but I suggested, I think I said north and south, but it turns out east and west will be better, doing half bulky waste for that side of the community in one year, doing the other half of the whole, and so I requested, we get a price for that, and therefore, if we got a price for that, you know, I did the math, it was like, what, a hundred?
It's a hundred fifty, it's three hundred, we figured a hundred fifty for half.
Yeah, AJ's comment was cut it in half.
And basically, Bonnie verified it, which to me matters. So that has some calculus in it, you could double your savings right there, if some of you are feeling sensitive about what's being asked, or an ed cut, for example.
Well, my concern about that, yeah, I mean, we've been discussing this in solid waste for the past eight months or so, with George, and then, because of transition from George, Gary, we said, well, let's table it until Gary gets his feet wet, and then we could discuss it again, and it will be discussed again, there are a lot of different types of ways that we could do the bulk trash that could save us money down the road, but for this year, you know, when you go back, I look back at the numbers since two thousand and four, when we did the bulk trash, when we did it every two years, we averaged somewhere in the eight-hundred-and-fifty-ton range for the town. When we skipped a year, two years, three years, you start going over a thousand tons, one year was fourteen-hundred-and-fifty tons, I believe, it gets very costly, and with the cost of the tipping fees going up higher and higher, next year it could be a lot higher, and next year's budget is gonna be a real tough one, for whoever's gonna be doing it, it's gonna be a tough one, because that's when the schools hit, and I'm thinking, I'd rather get, we have the money in the ARPA funds now, we use it for this year to get the bulk trash, because people want it, and then let the solid waste committee work on ideas for the next, over the next year or so, to come up with a better alternative to what we have been doing, I honestly think that's, that's the best way to go, I don't know if anybody else has, I mean-
My kind of, that I made in solid waste a few times, was that if you look at, if you look at when we did the bulky waste after two years, you know, it's the same fee, and then you get charged for how much you collect, right, so you pay the same fee every time, so the second time we did it, we collected a lot less stuff, so the value really wasn't there as much for the town when we did it after two years, so why not just do it every three years rather than every two years, we'll probably get much greater value for paying, that's my thinking, and pushing it off for one year.
Okay, so that, in other words, what you're saying, next year's the third year?
Correct.
So that's the year to do it?
Correct.
So you're supportive of making it in?
I'm saying, don't do it this year, do it next year.
Oh, fine, so you're suggesting it come out of the budget?
Correct.
Okay, Don also mentioned something I didn't think was being done, he mentioned ARPA funds, I thought this was-
Well, no, we don't need to, I almost wonder if we can hold this, some of these discussions till we get to at least have an overview in the end, because I think when you see what we were able to put together, we're not using ARPA funds, the mill rate's not going up more than two percent, all of this stuff fits together, maybe we're fixating on little details that we're losing the big picture at the moment, why don't we, this is, I want to have that discussion, not just because I favor doing it, I want to have that discussion.
And I understand.
But let's go on to the other, stretching the top left side where it showed the departments, so we've got this, yeah, let's-
I would just say, like I said, my comment has not so much to do with the three-hundred-thousand dollars, it has to do with what's the right number of years, and to me, right, three rather than every two, and every two, we're not getting as much value for it.
You notice that so many people are-
Yeah, and that's fair, and I think, we'll, we'll talk about that, all right, so now, you want to do the revenues part?
Sure, and we went through revenues last, so some of this is memorializing what we talked about last time, some, there was some questions-
Yeah, some, there's updates and new stuff, right, like line three.
Right, and really, line two and three, there were, we did talk about the interest in liens line, and kind of questions, sort of looking at the historical trends, could we increase that a little bit, we actually had further conversation just later this afternoon, with the tax office, and trying to predict kind of why we had those higher numbers the last couple of years, some of it's because of COVID, so we didn't do a lien sale one year, so that's why the revenues were higher, in the next year, so it's, we're just trying to predict that number, they're a little more comfortable with the fifty-thousand-dollar increase as opposed to seventy-five thousand, however, the supplemental motor vehicle line, so that one, we are comfortable going up at least a hundred thousand dollars, if not hedging a little more, that assumes about thirty-nine, thirty-eight point five million dollars of cars added to the list, the last few years, we've had forty and forty-two million dollars added, so just a small plug, I know it's minor at the point, I might suggest that we decrease this twenty-five thousand, increase that twenty-five thousand as a net wash, just for where we'd like to see those numbers, sorry if I'm kind of in the way too, oh, I got you, and so, that's a small note on those two items, but the good news is, combined, as opposed to where we were when we presented the budget, that's about a hundred eighty-five thousand dollars of additional revenue, we talked about, these are consistent with all the numbers we discussed at the last meeting, so I won't go through each of them, as increases to building, or to truing up where we think those should be, two four-hundred-thousand dollars C and R appropriations, or C and R, sorry, two ARPA-funded potential property purchases in the budget, one through C and R, and one is a direct purchase in the budget, both funded by ARPA, so those are those two items, and you'll see that's the four-hundred-thousand of revenue coming in from ARPA into the revenue side of the budget, but there are expenditures also, as we saw on that side, investment income, part of that was because of an increase to the amount that we're projecting to have cash on hand, and part of it was increasing the rate of return assumption on our investments that we were comfortable with at this point.
And those were consistent with what you said last week.
Right.
Sean, do you have an ARPA tab that we can look at later?
Yeah, later, let me pull it up separately from this, I'll just have to pull it up at the same time, and we can even log these on there and track where they are. We talked about investment income at the last meeting, and miscellaneous revenue, so and then, the proposal here would be, the one-point-three-million assumed in the budget that we would increase as fund balance applied to the following year, based on the surpluses we've had both projected this year and also very healthy surplus last year, that would bring the total to two million dollars, you'll see that in a little more detail here on our favorite mill rate calculator, which I know is always initially a little overwhelming, but what you have here in column B, sorry, my head's in the way, these are summing all of the tabs we just talked about, so the net decrease of sixty-one thousand in general government, if you include that full subsidy discussion, proposed, and again, all these up for discussion, reduction to the board of education budget of four-hundred thousand even, debt service that we talked about, savings rolls up here, and included in this number, I didn't mean to gloss over this, but is a two-hundred-and-eighty-thousand-dollar reduction, this is back on the, sorry, let me just go back to expenditures for one second, an additional proposal here, we talked about the amount of debt service that the sewer department is paying towards their own debt service, my proposal here that we've been discussing is, if you recall in the budget, the balanced budget that the WPCD has in your budget would add two-hundred-and-eighty-nine thousand to their fund balance next year, this proposal would be to say, let's apply that two-hundred-and-eighty thousand towards their debt service, get a jumpstart on truing that up, kind of more to the historic eighty percent that we wanted to be at, right now, it's at sixty-two percent, this additional two-eighty, if they start paying in their budget, would bring them to seventy-two percent of their own debt service, and I think that's a more appropriate number, and also, it's a balanced budget, and we were pretty comfortable with that roughly thirty percent fund balance that they have, I think this is a balanced approach that saves the general fund two-hundred-and-eighty thousand dollars, so that's a lot of information, but if that makes some sense based on the discussion last time, once you add that two-eighty, the rest of this is the debt service savings we had from the advantageous rates that we received when we just sold last week, and closed a couple of days ago, my joke's perfect, and, but what it doesn't include importantly, we talked a little bit about accelerating the use of bond premium, kind of front-loading bond premium as opposed to just taking that one-point-four million and dividing it by twenty, this doesn't include accelerating it, so it just takes simply the more- This doesn't include accelerating it, so it just takes simply the more conservative approach of, apply the 20-year of future debt service, apply the bond premium divided just in 20, over 20 years on a straight line.
Seventy-three, seventy-three, seventy-three. Which is what we've been doing, that's, that's what we do.
Which is what we've historically, yes, what we've been doing, no, yeah, so that would be otherwise about a $70,000 item that, in some machinations of this, we've considered putting here, and yes, that's, yeah, that's ultimately where that. Any questions on that, so we'll go back to the mill rate calculator quickly. So that's where these columns here total, and then those revenue tabs we talked about also total up to $2.1 million in increased revenues. Grand total net change to the budget is $2.6 million. As David indicated earlier, because the $400 million that is our motor vehicles on our grand list is kind of frozen, as long as we're above this 32.46% cap, the kind of advantage at this stage in the budget process is that's not, it's static, right? Those are set numbers, and so our grand list for purposes of what is adjusted by the actual mill rate is actually more like $2.6 billion as opposed to $3 billion. So while we've been kind of back of the envelope saying we need to look for about $3 million for a one-mill decrease, it's actually about $2.6 million. And so that helps here, what you, starting at the top row, just to refresh everybody, our existing mill rate's 34.32, the proposed mill rate in my budget was 36.09. The mill rate, this blue one is dynamic with any changes we make over here or really on other tabs. We're currently at 35.09. This yellow cell is one we plug in if we have a target, if you want to see what it is to get to 35.09, which of course, right now I'm showing it as 35.09. That's a one full mill decrease, that would be instead of a 1.77 mill increase, it would be a .77 mill increase. Or $164 a year for the average home value, home property, and a 2.07% tax increase. Further down, you'll see, the last thing I'll say before I stop talking and let you ask a lot of questions, is this blue box here kind of shows the surplus numbers. These are consistent with what you have in the budget book, but we started with the 14.2 million. We're projecting this year about a $2.6 million surplus, bringing us to $16.8 million at the end of this year. That becomes kind of day one of next year before we apply some use of budget, of fund balance into the next year's budget. I propose 1.3 million, we have a proposal of $700,000 to increase that, that moves with the other tabs, should we play with that number. And to a, to a point I think David made at the beginning, this would still leave us at just about 12% of fund balance, consistent with our policy of being at 10, our future policy of being at 10%. And then these are the final numbers adjusted with any of those changes in the other tabs, of what our actual appropriation increases would change to based on, compared with what I proposed. Sorry, I have a lot of information.
Yeah, I thought it was important to go through that, we got too much into the details and didn't get a chance to see the big picture first, so I apologize, I didn't want to cut anywhere out from discussion.
And this includes the bulky waste pickup, the way.
Right, that was in the recommendation.
For the full tab, yes, for a full tab, $300,000.
Just, just some arbitrary discussion, to reduce the mill rate 0.5, to get it down below the target, make it 35.
So like 34.59? 0.5 further?
No, but just to a total of 0.5.
Point.
Oh, 0.50 mills?
Yeah. Just for the purpose of discussion, how much would we have to?
Twenty-five dollars.
That's all?
Sorry, 34.8, so to a target of 34.82?
Twenty-five.
So that totals.
No.
A 2.27 mill decrease from where we are now?
So we need to cut 700,000?
I understand what you're saying.
It's a lot.
Yeah, the number is in the mill, 700.
200,000 sounds like a million.
It used to be, now it's 3 million.
Now, is it the state cap not changing, is it?
Not that I'm aware of.
Could they change it? With education, they have a bucket there.
In terms of the state cap cards?
I'm talking about the, yeah, for the, the mill rate, they have the cap mill rate on that. But I know last year we had to wait to see what it was.
I haven't heard where they're really focusing on that.
I don't think there's any pending legislation.
I'm aware of a decision.
Unless it changes in the governor's budget.
Which we've included in this.
Right, exactly.
So we'll assume that it is the mistake, same thing.
The appropriations committee approved out a budget that's $400 million more, which is very small, and their number is $52 billion budget the other day, their deadline was now for them to draft, so they're there. That doesn't help or hurt us a lot in any of this stuff, it doesn't change that number that we're talking about. It does help in some ways, possibly with the board of ed, and some, what was that, $125,000?
Yeah, so I talked to Dr. Zollin a couple nights ago actually though, and he hadn't had a chance to read through all of the proposal, it was the day that it was released.
Yeah.
What you're referring to is the actual governor's budget included a proposal related to special ed costs that would save the board of ed $125,000, so it's an additional revenue item, it would be $125,000 they wouldn't have to spend.
Exactly.
My understanding from what he read, and again, I haven't had a chance to verify this, was that in the appropriations budget, that was not included, so it was a little more up in the air as to whether.
That's what I just asked him, and he didn't know.
So it's probably doubtful.
I think it's, I think now the legislature and the governor will negotiate it, and we won't know till the first week of June.
Right.
What happens, so harder to kind of count.
So Peter, I'm sorry, go ahead, Peter asked it before about the ARPA funds, so where do we stand with what we're using, versus what's left over?
Can you just give me two on it?
Will be left over, still. Two million will be left over still.
Left over still, and when do we have to use the funding?
Next, and then next year.
December 2024.
December of 2024, we have.
Right. And next year, right, we don't actually spend it, we have to encumber it. We've encumbered, this will encumber $6 million of the $8 million. If we did this. We still have, there's still $2 million left.
There's still enough for a splash pass.
Well, yeah.
December 1.
He can be the first one to slip.
Make sure our insurance is. So, yeah, there's, without these two appropriations that we've been talking about, that's what the balance is, 2-8, December 1. But you can see where we spent money, you know, last year, bulky waste, and then to the insurance trust of the board of ed directly, then we had to change that, but that's where it went, and then revenue the first year too.
So that doesn't take, yeah, it's 2-8, but that doesn't take into account potential 200, 200, correct.
It's almost exactly 2 million.
Yeah.
We also discussed a sort of a backstop, potentially using that money for barkle and salt if needed when we made that award, although we are still relatively confident in additional money, and it's too early to say if we need any contingency money, so that number's not out of the question.
But just anything else that the town sees pending that would be something we would want to reserve that money for?
Yes, but we don't have a number on it yet, and we're in open session, so remind us that it would involve. Is that, does that help everybody understand what I'm saying?
Got it, got it, yep.
Okay.
Can I ask just?
That leaves enough, yeah, that leaves enough money to do any other projects that we might consider.
I just had one question about this, what was, you know, we had a healthy surplus this year. So healthy surpluses come about in unusual ways, that are often replicated, especially when you're predicting revenue. So where did this healthy surplus come from?
So I'll speak to one, and then I'll turn it to my esteemed finance director for an answer there. But one item, and I'm glad you brought that up, one item that was, I think we did touch on this maybe at the beginning of one of our first meetings, but there was an unanticipated, almost is it $600,000, $500,000 from the state, that we received out of this municipal revenue sharing account, that we did not budget for, we were told not to budget for it last year, it wasn't in the governor's budget, but it happened when they took whatever was remaining from the sales tax, that portion of the sales tax that we all pay, that is designated for municipalities under the way they have it set up now, to fund some of these municipal revenue sharing grants. Based, whatever they had left over, they divided up amongst all the towns proportionally, and they distributed. We were surprised to receive $550-plus thousand dollars. Is that going to happen again? And we asked, of course, beginning of this process, can we count on that, is it a good number, can I put that in the budget? And the folks at CCM were like, we really wouldn't advise it, because if they use all of it, or however this budget shakes out, there may be zero next year that is available to be distributed.
And that was sales tax revenue?
Sales tax revenue designated for the towns by statute.
Yeah, there's a percentage, a part of it, if we remember when it went up.
So if we're heading into sort of a down cycle in spending, and the retail stores aren't even online, it's probably surplus.
But the, yeah, so but the point is.
And then it gets distributed.
But it's, it's a chunk of the surplus this year, and then Jim, I know we, I mean, there's a budget surplus?
Part of it is, you know, art collection.
Better collection, but that wasn't that much.
Because we have the conservatives, so that's a good for having at least five or six hundred pounds of change.
Oh, is that?
That's much.
And it's about five and a half. Remember, we had like stellar returns on building fees.
Well, that's the piece of it that I thought was.
And in the special, the.
That's the anomaly, because we could have another good year, I mean, I don't think we have another three years of those, but we probably have another good year.
One or two.
The police one is not likely to be replicated, because that was a kind of one-time, by two companies, major fiber rollout.
But we still have $12,000.
And investment income is certainly more than what we were projecting.
Right, where we. Now we're budgeting for that, so we're budgeting for some of that, I mean, we're not, so we probably will still end up with a surplus, but I don't think it's going to be 2.6 million.
Correct.
Could be a lot less.
Right, and I just think that's just something to keep in the back four lines.
How much was under-expending?
So only, so 200, well, it's right here, 215, this year?
From under-expending, how much of the 2.6 million you're expecting was because we spent less?
215, 387.
Oh, that's why you separated.
Yeah, expenditure, expected expenditure was expected revenue. And but I would say at the time, it was the middle of the winter, so I, we, that includes assuming, that's a lot, mostly positions.
If we had a tougher winter, that would have been zero.
So that is not, right, I would hedge that that number is higher at this point, at least $100,000 based on favorable winter. And the snow and ice account being under, over $100,000.
And the revenue's up just $100,000 from that one property sale. So I mean, we're at about a $3 million surplus for this year.
It is, it is pretty unusual, you know, other than the built-in conservative tax revenue adjustment.
Exactly.
Almost everything else is unexpected.
Do we have funds for the other $200,000 in our funds, I mean, is most of that on their mind?
I've always had on the back of my mind, I was nervous about the school project, and so that could be a fail-safe, I mean, a fallback if we were to.
But how do you encumber that before the, well, what?
I think the bids will be out before we have to finish encumbering that, because won't the bids be ready out next fall?
Both a lot of inflation in those bids.
I mean, it doesn't go a long way, but it's 2%.
The bids should be out, yeah, we have a lot of inflation.
Right, so, well, there was a lot of inflation built in, there was a lot of extra money for, there was a million dollars for each school for a special energy program, there was a lot of money in there, that hopefully is enough.
So I wanted, sorry, yeah, so these are results from operations, so these are surpluses annually. You'll see, last year was just exceptional, and for a variety of reasons. And this year is shaping up to be really almost, that 2.7, 2.6 will be right around here for next year. This is fiscal '22, and some of this is timing, some of this was FEMA reimbursements and things that we.
Yeah, in 2022, that was a lot of COVID-related grants that we didn't budget for, and FEMA, we got, I think it was over $650,000 that we have for Isaiah's.
But going back, this just shows 10 years of surplus, so to your question, sort of where we are, you always drive towards a surplus. We've had more kind of unexpected favorable news in the last couple of years, and I wouldn't expect them on a annual basis, otherwise we'd be budgeting for them.
So what, what items are left that are under discussion then to try and reduce the, reduce the budget a little bit more, if there's anything? Because obviously the bulky waste bit up, is there anything else on the table that people are?
This pretty much has everything in there, I mean, we certainly do have items that we personally, you know, ask questions on during the, during the departments and their reviews, and this, I only put together as a summary of all of your comments, it didn't include everything everybody said, because sometimes we disagree with each other, you know, we didn't all agree on everything. So this was a discussion point, just to put something on paper, Tom and Andy worked very hard with Jim to get these numbers together so we could make our options. Could we leave out the bulky waste and cut another tenth of a mill? Sure, I would not favor that, I think we pay enough in taxes, at a $133 million budget, we can't find $300,000 for a service that people expect and that helps, I don't have a pickup truck, I'm only going to get rid of this stuff. You don't have one anymore, yeah.
What, just two items that I was wondering about, and I don't think they show up here, but I don't really fully understand it, and that was the plan of development update and the traffic study with the police department, they are not in this.
Those are capital.
They're capitalized, they were touched on when they came and revealed us.
I thought they were.
It's not.
So it's, that's a great point though, and it's one that I think has caused some confusion about, it's a wonderful question, because technically what the operating budget does is it funds CNR. The actual appropriations of those that cash funded for capital, right, that's really what CNR is. The appropriations you will make, and you could make it at the same time, if we were adopting at the same time, we're not planning to do that. But the funding for CNR is made in the operating budget, and then, and historically, we would take up capital not until July. You then decide effectively what projects you're putting in CNR, and it really becomes more, a lot of it's an exercise Jim goes through, is which ones, based on how much we funded CNR with in the prior year, how much can that be applied to which of the smaller and more CNR appropriate projects? But the actual individual projects, like the POCD or anything else that are recommended to be funded with CNR, you won't make until you make the appropriations, so you're funding the CNR account.
We are, what we funded at is not, well, we're talking about going to what, a million four?
So we're actually talking about going to 1.9, because 800,000 of it would be revenue funded by ARPA.
For those two projects, so it was really 1.1 million dollars in spendable.
Where do we typically?
That's where we were last year, it went up last year, to that.
Yeah, 1.5.
Because I have some concerns with those items, if those are in the back of our mind, as being funded with that. I mean, I, I'm, I consider reducing that now to.
I'd rather see us leave the money where you pay as you go, if you will, and we'll switch it with other items. If there's an item that you don't want, or the majority.
I'd just absolutely, I'd like to have a discussion about those, that's all.
Yeah, and we will, and we need to have that as part of the capital project.
Particularly the POCD?
I think the two of them need to be talked about together, and some priorities have to be set, and some appropriate timing, so that they work appropriately, and that we don't do the two things at the same time.
This is maybe a good time to address some of that concern, because I did also have a conversation based on an email I had from Jim that went to Don, I think, and I had a follow-up conversation with Mike, with the town planner. Number one, why is the POCD so expensive? And number two, how important did he think a traffic study would be? And so his input for me was, well, I did do some investigation into the POCD, and I think we do need some consultants, and we do think we need more, you know, engagement with the public, which might involve surveys and things of that nature. So he said he kind of came to that number, it's by no means hard and fast, but he didn't think it was a dumb number. He said as to the traffic study, whether it's for public safety and/or planning purposes, or whatever gets incorporated into it, he thought that that isn't something we probably wanted to fund in any capital budget, because that money should be available through a COG. And he cited Simsbury, which both he and Sean were needy in, when they did a traffic study up there, and their COG paid for it. So that is a conversation, you know, it's not like written code, written law, but I thought it was very informative.
Yeah, I think it's a conversation with having them, rather than just arbitrarily funding those at full numbers, and not understanding how they interact, and what are the priorities, and, because they need to work together.
Right, well, he also said, Sean, to your, John, to your point, that he would recommend perhaps, or we could recommend perhaps, that a traffic study be part of the plan of development, be something that's, you know, looked at, that they could do and plan for in the future, so not even in next year's upper end budget or capital budget.
I think like the calming part of the traffic study, and I think our chief wants to do some calming, to reduce speeds, et cetera, is something that could be part of the plan of development, it should be done, whether it's done by the police or done, it should be done together, they should be coordinated.
is something that could be part of the plan of development, it should be done, whether it's done by the police or done, it should be done together, they should be coordinated. The traffic study, the volume aspect of the traffic study, which primarily focuses on our central corridor, is hopefully could be funded outside as well, but also, I'm of the opinion, we might want to hold off a little bit to see the impact of a lot of development in the north end, the actual impact of how many people actually are generated through the center of town by using either the commercial up there or the residential or back. I don't think we know that for sure, our firm did the traffic studies, those are based on assumptions, we don't really know what that's going to do. We don't know how many people from the north end are handed, or from the center handed, are going to come to a shopping center on the north end of Cheshire, right through the center, because there's no easier way to get, I think we should wait a year or two before we look at the impacts on volume reduction or volume options. So I just wanted to talk about it, because I don't want to just arbitrarily fund those two things and not think about how they logically should get done, that's all.
I I want to make sure we have that discussion in more depth when, in next month, when we're going to review the capital items. What the effect would be here is that we're putting one point nine million dollars, well, let's say one point one, again, that's what it really is. One point one million dollars to take the thirty million dollars in capital items that we're going to discuss next month, and it'll pay cash for some of that. If we decide to leave those two projects out, there will be other projects that we can spend the one point one million and forego debt service and.
Like, yeah, like even part of, I know we don't have plow truck in there, but for instance, a plow truck or something like that would be in CNR, and we wouldn't be financing it. And sort of higher.
So I don't think that one point one is the right number, is my.
No, I think it's too low.
The one point one is too low?
Yes, but I'm going to support it because it's what works together.
Okay.
But if there was another half a million dollars that we could go, you know, two tenths of a mil more that we were willing to go higher, I'd put one tenth in the pension plan as an additional contribution, because it's way underfunded, we're fifty two, sixty three percent, I think they are, and that's low. And then I would put another quarter million dollars at least in the CNR.
And for people in the room, when you talk about the the bulky waste collection versus a slighter, a slighter reduction in tax impacts, how do you, how do you believe the townspeople feel, this is on this, do you think they would prefer that service and maybe pay a little bit more?
Twenty dollars is what it would save, less than that, eighteen, eighteen dollars by that by twenty, eighteen dollars.
Eighteen dollars on average.
I think eighteen dollars worth just to pay for the slide I have to get rid of out of my backyard, and I'm sure I'm not the only one in that position, it's eighteen dollars.
Well, that makes sense, yeah, that's why I asked the question.
Well, that's one of the one thing, few things that actually everybody in this town will utilize. I mean, not everybody's utilizing the schools, not everybody's using the parks every day. The bulk traffic, the majority of people are going to be using, and I think that's that's an important part of that. Uh, one thing I I had a question about, I mean, because we kind of didn't really discuss too much, and Vin's already left, but we're taking four hundred thousand dollars out of the education.
Where's their list?
Um, is there, uh, anything that they want to add or to to?
They don't want that.
They don't want it, but I understand.
Their finance chairman told me very directly, we thought we did a decent job cutting where we are, that's not to say there isn't some, they knew there was going to be something coming, that's not.
Well, they don't have their retire, do they know their retirements?
They, well, his comment to us was they don't save us any money anymore like they used to.
I mean, it's probably.
But there are some retirements, and we don't always have to hire at the top end of the scale, but a town like Cheshire, people want to come to. For lots of, we got great new department heads here in the town hall that Arnett and Sean have worked with to get here, and the same thing they're doing over there. So there won't be as big a savings, but what was the budget, eighty five million dollars? It's two percent, less than two percent.
It would now be eighty five, you're eighty four nine.
Right, so I, well, that's the thing, the four, it's either slightly above or slightly below eighty five million, but enough that I I'm comfortable that the mil rate is right with the expenditures from the different departments, but hey, we want to go up another tenth of a mil and cut the bulky waste in half and give another hundred and fifty thousand to the board of ed, that's not unreasonable.
Did we do it or not? Did we in the calculation cut out the?
And what?
Long waste, yeah, if we.
And, okay.
You can put it right, so if I put three hundred.
Cuts and.
Yep, there you go, so three hundred thousand.
And then let's see what the mil rate becomes.
Yeah, you just, yeah, you just did that.
And then divide it by the houses in town, you said it was eighteen to twenty dollars or something? Nine to five hundred.
Right, so it went from a hundred sixty eight dollars cutting out bulky waste to a hundred thirty nine dollars, so it's twenty nine dollars, sorry.
It's twenty nine dollars and on top of that, it's, um, how much per household, how many households? That that gives us, how many households do we have in town?
Ten thousand.
Ten thousand, okay. So we're spending three hundred dollars, dollars, or was it thirty dollars a household?
Thirty dollars.
Yeah, yeah, right.
It's about right. However, I mean, we could even lower the number to to two seventy five or two sixty five, because if we go by history of what we've done, it would do it, but I mean, you want to lower it a few, you know, twenty five thousand dollars or something, because it probably will come in, I mean, historically, it's always been under that.
Yeah, the only issue is that they did raise the tip fee by five dollars, but we still were comfortable that it was under the three hundred thousand that we had. I think it brought us to our estimate around two eighty two, two eighty five.
But we're also very concerned because, I mean, it's only going to keep increasing the tip fees, and and who knows what the next few years he's going to bring us and, you know, I mean, you, we we may, if we do it this year, we don't have to worry about it for two years and and then, you know, see where it is, because with the plant closing up in Hartford, and, you know, I I think we're going to be in, our next contract for trash pickup is going to is going to be a big one.
Well, how about we take twenty from that and we have thirty two remaining, so we take twenty from the bulky waste and we put thirty five back to the board of ed?
I I'm fine with the board of ed at four hundred thousand, honestly, I think it's a massive budget, and and I think I think it's it's reasonable. Well, I think we have to look for other things other than, I mean, there's a lot being done in the community for schools, and that that's not an important thing, but I think we do have to look for services that that other people can benefit from in the community, so I I tend to agree with keeping the empty state. So we agree it's thirty dollars a household to do the bulky waste?
No, it's twenty, twenty eight.
No, it's twenty bucks.
Twenty eight or twenty nine, it lowers the taxes that much, I mean, it's not exactly working that way, because some get the dumpsters and don't get the regular.
Twenty five dollars a year.
It's all different.
Yeah, it's in the, it's in the average, so it's applied to the more rate that businesses pay and other other non-residentials pay that are not eligible for remote use.
Historically, the the board of ed, I mean, I think you may have mentioned last minute, they they'll give like a, okay, if you cut our budget X, here's what we can, here's how we will react, yeah, so here's like, here's the.
An impact assessment?
Did they?
I don't have that, do you, do you?
I only have, no, I I I don't have that, I have conversations that I've had with Dr. Swollen, I think, um, my understanding, I won't put words in his mouth, but around four hundred thousand, sort of the upper limit of what they felt they could tolerate, but I think they felt they could do so without.
The upper limit, so once everyone quit with the budget.
But it could.
Yeah, I don't want to, I mean, this is a very.
But I agree with David, what would that mean? Tell me what it is, you're going to give away books, are you going to lose a teacher, or are you going, what, what do you, how are you going to?
That's a good question that we should get an answer.
Without the medical trespassing stuff.
Well.
He mentioned again, he said that they would be able to handle that without any, you know, disastrous.
Right.
When I floated six hundred thousand, it was directly told to me that that would be a disaster.
Yeah.
Right.
So four hundred, you go from, instead of two hundred thousand, you go from a disaster to a disaster?
From from upper limit to disaster over two hundred grand, but that's why quite frankly.
Eighty five million dollar budget.
But they could get that hundred and twenty five thousand dollar savings, so it's really, so so it could be.
If we did have, you know, these numbers are all around, there's going to be an extra fifteen or twenty thousand to put somewhere. My sympathies are to put it there when we actually get to all the number, because a lot of the the mil rate, uh, revenue driven, how am I wording that? Revenue driven.
No rate sensitive items.
Thank you, uh, well, there's going to be a few, there's going to be some money left over, and my sympathies would be to put it there. Especially if the appropriations committee didn't approve that.
What, um, what's next week we're scheduled for adoption?
Yeah, we have to by charter, it's Wednesday.
By the thirtieth?
Yeah.
Well, you don't have to.
We don't have to do it on Wednesday.
You don't have to do it at all.
Sunday.
Oh, that's true, yeah, but then we're looking at one point seven, like, because we found, you know.
Right, or you're giving in my budget.
Right, exactly, yeah, right, yeah, so it's Wednesday.
I mean, we've said Wednesday, yeah, Wednesday is the date.
Yes, yeah, Wednesday's our meeting scheduled, I mean, we could do Thursday if we had to, but it would have to be later, because Tim and I both have a meeting.
Let's do Wednesday.
What I would say is the outstanding items is we have to decide what to do about trash, and I honestly don't know if it came out of the vote right now, whether it be.
Well, why don't we just ask, because we can maybe get this settled, they still have to put together.
So, well, here's, here's two two things that I want to throw out. One, I'm uncomfortable with the seven hundred, increase of seven hundred thousand from general fund balance.
Okay.
Because it's it's money that we don't have next year, so it's, you know, if we're we're starting right away seven hundred thousand.
Yeah.
So if you take bulky waste out, three hundred thousand, you encumber it for the following year and pay it with ARPA out of the two million remaining, now you've got one point seven, it comes out of this budget, it reduces that general fund balance draw down to four hundred thousand,
Yeah.
which I'd still like to see if there's a way we can get that down to zero and keep it at one point three. Um, the only reason I say that, David, is I'm I'm looking at, um, if the projected unassigned is right now at just under seventeen mil. That one right there, Sean, so if, um, if you're using the one point three, that takes us down to fifteen five. If we take, uh, if we take a million and a half and put it into debt service to smooth the the school spike, you know, like we did a couple of years ago with the wastewater treatment plant, take a, take that million and a half to start, start some sort of smoothing on schools.
Which million and a half, I'm sorry, wasn't following.
Well, no, you're, so in other words, you, no, you've got, you've got sixteen, sixteen eight, let's call it sixteen eight.
Right.
You're using one point three, which is part of the budget, so it's it's fifteen five right now.
Yeah.
If we take it down to fourteen million, that's roughly eleven percent.
Right.
Twelve percent.
Yeah. Um, well, no, that's that's almost fifteen, Don, so I'm I'm saying an extra, take it all the way down to,
I'll take them lower.
You know, use the the one and a half to knock that down, so we we still have a fund balance of fourteen million, um, which is somewhere just north of eleven percent, and take that one and a half million and throw it right to debt service in the out years to start smoothing that spike.
How do you do that?
It goes in debt reserve, yeah.
Okay, so we go through debt reserve account?
Right, and we have a lot of debt reserve.
You allocated. See, I had thought that's how we would use ARPA, to be honest, some some use of ARPA, if we get to the bottom line.
Well, yeah, on the schools, that's exactly what I have in mind.
We could, we could still do that, if we get to, if we get to the final, the final week, and we've still got a million or X number of dollars in there, then you automatically throw it on debt reserve or debt service.
Well, you're still limited, what, I'm not positive, that was one of them, but, um, we could, Jim will make it, yeah, because it's a one time.
Every council can change what that is anyway, there's still the best, now, we've done pretty well at, you know, maintaining the course, if you will, with that debt service line, we did that pretty, pretty well, we didn't change that.
And don't forget, we just got that additional fourteen million, that, uh, one point four million, one point four million dollars, uh, in the bond proceeds. That we're, we're using very little now, it's really, what Jim did was divided over the twenty years at seventy three thousand dollars a year. What I'm saying is, two years from now, three years from now, four years from now, we're going to use four hundred thousand dollars a year or so to help with this bike. And then we're not going to wait and use it over twenty years, so we just did build up a whole lot of.
Just for effect, could could you tell me what just happened with your rejiggering on the building?
Um, well.
You were just concerned about clips.
Yeah, no, I was I was worried about using the seven hundred thousand, but if you pull bulky waste out, so basically what I've done to mil rate is is add in four hundred thousand, I don't know.
Because what you what you want to do is, you're suggesting that ARPA funds pay for solid waste.
Yeah.
Not solid waste, but bulky waste.
And 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 I thought Don had spoken when he said it was being paid for.
Well, we had done last, last time we did use ARPA.
Right, we did.
This budget does not function.
Right, so. Right now, it's in the budget, so we pulled it out of the budget, moved it to the following fiscal year with ARPA, encumbered ARPA money, so that takes three hundred thousand out, so now that reduces the the use of fund balance by 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 three hundred down to, from seven down to, or the additional fund balance use from seven down to four.
Well, here's the other piece I want clarity on with the with the putting the three hundred, the bulky waste off for another year. Jim, you said that would keep us on track with doing it every third year, but isn't this year the third year?
No.
Eventually, every two years for the last couple of times, yeah.
I just think that's too often. I I agree, it's just too often, I just, I'm sorry, but it's not just because all the cracks out of my basement, I I just, I just.
I know. I know, it three years, three years is fine.
I think.
David Swink said it's going to have to wait.
I don't.
I cut up and burned the wood, it's the plastic slide.
And while we're, while we're throwing things in, I would love to see us throw in the additional thirty grand for Sunday library hours.
Yeah, I think that was the great, yeah.
Somewhere.
Well, I I I don't agree with taking out bulky trash this year, because I think, I my concern is that, like I said, next year's budget is going to be bigger. I understand you want to use ARPA funds, and I don't want to use ARPA funds this year versus next year, is it?
I don't have a clue with that, we're okay with the ARPA funds going.
Yeah, but but. But but at the end of the day, I'm I'm concerned about.
I thought it was thirty.
I'm I'm concerned about that the the tipping fees increasing. And and, you know, you know, it's just going to get more expensive, there's going to be more more stuff next year, and it's just going to get more, and like I said, next year, our budget is going to be cut, it's going to be cut.
But it is more expensive, when we do it every two years, it is more expensive anyway, because we're paying the same fee level, we're collecting less.
I don't know if we're paying, well.
No, they, so they cut the fee in half, exactly in half, so the.
For half, yeah.
But if we do half and half.
If we did half and half, if you assume half similar half tonnage, then it is just half the cost.
But is this, is this fee the last, the same, is is this full year fee that they're proposing, the same amount of the full year fee we pay?
Two years.
Two years.
Yeah.
It's a little higher, we paid one fifty five last time, so it's about thirty thousand higher.
Forty, forty.
So a little more, a little more than half is the fee and less than half is the.
And five dollars more a ton.
It's the unpredictable part, but yeah, they still have expectations. We did it, we didn't do it for five years, obviously, that fifth year was a massive amount, every collect.
Yeah, that was huge.
So that was worthwhile, obviously, and then when we did it two years later, same fee amount, we collected a lot less stuff. That's that's my, that's why, that's why I say three years makes more sense.
But even if you're taking it out, Peter, you're not suggesting we we use the mil rate, you're suggesting we get rid of, we get rid of.
Take less fund balance, yeah.
And you think, well, I I don't understand why that's important to.
Because if you if you take seven hundred thousand out of fund balance and and now count it as revenue for this year, that's revenue that you don't have when next year starts, you know, assuming taxes and everything else come in, all the, all the same revenue, that's seven hundred thousand dollars that you have to go find every, or, you know, next year, because you didn't have it this year. You, you know, you you took it out of the gift account, so to speak, and and claimed it as revenue, and you don't have that next year, and less every year now, you want to start whacking that for two million.
Well, it also, it's demonstrated by the fact that we're probably have one more year of bulk circles because of extra revenue and building permits. There's no guarantee, you know, so it might not be a clip next year, but it could make.
There's no guarantee, because there's a high likelihood of listing a common crash.
As one of the sources.
Probably there'd be much more building activity next year than there was this year.
But they also had six hundred thousand that came from sales tax revenue that is likely not to be reviewed.
What do we typically have in a fund balance, what do we put in these budgets?
Or, well, when we looked at that graph.
We always, we use one point three every year.
That was the excess, that was what we put in, that was the excess, but what do we normally put in our?
Right, that's the excess, that's Tom, I was looking it up, because I just asked him that.
I did, okay.
What what we.
What we put in last year.
General fund equity last year, we did one point, uh, one point seven million dollars.
We utilized?
Yeah.
One point seven million. Put a half a million of that was ARPA infused, increased.
So one point seven percent.
So that's one point two.
So one point two is just point seven this year.
This year.
Well, yeah, one point three in my budget, one point two last year.
This budget had one point three?
Yeah, now, the the proposal. Yeah, now the, the proposal post, post my budget.
You have to, you have to use that 1.3 out of some, or every year. Otherwise you gotta, you gotta find a way to, you know, make it up.
We build in about half of that number. We build in about half that number from the, the collection rate assumption. So we assume we're going to collect 99.3% and we collect about 99.7%.
And that was for a while.
For a while.
We were, we were playing around with tweaking that and we finally stopped it. We were at 99, we went to 99.1, 99.2, 99.3. And that eats away your surplus every year and, you know, it assumes that you're gonna, you're gonna have great collection rates like we've had.
Are all those concerned about that too?
I look at the other things like the supplemental motor vehicles, we're going to get more than what it is, our historical averages now. I think the department, the building department is going to bring in a lot more than what we're budgeting. This is conservative, I mean, I, I think that they will. But I don't want to push those to be revenue because then that's year after year you have to make that. I think there's enough softness.
I'd like to not be so conservative and then push taxes up, I think that's just not fair. I'd rather be a little bit, a little realistic and, and optimistic and not push taxes up. That's my own, my own feeling, so.
So you'd rather have a focus of lowering the mill rate instead of going up the.
I personally would, yeah.
Okay.
I'd, I'd like to lower more. I think there's going to be more people happy about that than wasted collection, to be honest with you, even though it's only 28 dollars.
Well, that, I would prefer if we did that to lower the mill rate even more and not affect the fund balance.
I think people would prefer a lower mill rate to, to.
They won't know.
Yeah, this, any people who collect your metal waste.
Can we agree that, can we agree that bulky waste should come out?
Or that it's going to be funded by ARPA?
If we decide to fund it, it's going to be funded through ARPA? And then the question is whether it's this year or next year.
And that's different question, that's three different questions.
Yeah, but actually, I think there's two ways to answer that question.
Can we say it comes out and gets funded by ARPA if we do it?
Well, and are you suggesting Peter, if we do that, we take 300,000 out of the fund balance?
No, take 300,000 less out of the fund balance. I would rather take that.
So how does that come in now?
You're comfortable with that number, why don't we just leave it?
No, I'd rather take it out of fund balance than take it out of ARPA funds with the school, that 2 million dollars or so. I'm just nervous, I'd like to, I'd be comfortable leaving that about 2 million dollars for ARPA, for the construction of the school, just in case something comes up with that. I mean, I do want bulky waste, I do think it should be this year. And I think people expect it with the tax rate, I don't think one, what is it, 0.07?
Well, what is the difference in the calendar?
I don't think that makes any difference. I don't think anybody's going to say, oh, $2 a month more in my taxes, the 28 dollar. I don't think that makes any difference to anybody, but not having the bulky waste, I think does make a lot of difference.
Is that 0.66 now, is that what that is? If, if you reduce it by 20,000, it was 0.77 before.
I think the Sunday hours in the library, I agree with you, I think that makes sense.
I think I would agree with that.
I think that's a.
Yeah.
I would.
I mean, you can either, you can do that and put the bulky waste out to 2.7.
Exactly, I, I was gonna say, that's a switch, make bulky waste 2.80 and put 2000.
He's not talking about that number.
Yeah, I remember that, yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah, I think we did that, I thought we jumped out of the tweet.
Your point is whether the fund balance.
I thought we already dumped into 2.80.
Yeah.
Well, we can probably.
Yeah.
I mean.
Yeah, there's, there's a lot of.
There's a lot of conversations going around.
So if I put 20,000 here for the bulky waste discussion, that's taking it down from 300 to 200.
Right, that's a savings of 20,000 and then Sunday hours was 22.
Right, that's what I said last.
No, that, it was 22 when we did it, but Beth said that if we were to reinstate it, she estimated 30.
Okay.
Right, you're right, that's where the 22 came in.
So we're up plus 10. And she really wanted that? Did she have to?
No, I, I was the one that asked her to, to put it together. That would be a negative.
A lot of programs have, but that's the thing.
That would be, that would be Sunday available.
No, it's, it's almost a staff.
So what is it?
It's a staffing issue.
See, I think you would get into a staffing.
There's no one wants a staffer.
Yeah, she said hard enough to hire a waitress. So many ones work on that. I think we're, I, I think we're sort of confusing a problem where we don't have one, to be honest with you. Uh, for, for low dollar.
I disagree with that, I would, I would rather send Sunday because I would use the library on Sunday time during the week.
I got the impression from, from Beth that when.
Wouldn't be, I don't remember the conversation, I gotta be honest with you, I don't remember.
That's what makes it work, whatever the hell what's.
So, so.
As a way they could work.
The reason it goes to 400 is we take more out of ARPA of 2.80 to cover the bulky waste is one of the scenarios.
Yeah, which I think, I think that could be on the table.
All right.
I'm not comfortable with encumbering what's already in surplus, if you will.
Are we, all right, let's do this, are we comfortable with doing the bulky waste with ARPA funds?
I'll raise that in.
Yeah.
I'd like to keep it in and so forth, that's the case, I'd like to keep it in.
All right, well, eight to one, I don't want to spend the money that way, but we'll do it, that's fine.
Oh, you're the other. I'd rather have the budget.
I'd rather not, but that's fine, all right, so that's good, this is what we're doing here. So we will take additional 280,000 out of ARPA funds. Which would then bring it, once we do that other project we talked about that, we don't have in there, we bring it to about a million and a half. Okay? Which is still significant funds because we were down to 2.1, this is 2.8, so that brings in 1.8. The.
Control decision.
Yeah.
Yes, okay, that brings it down to 1.5.
Right.
All right. So now.
Put that in each one.
What we can do is take 300, or 280, 300, whatever the number is now, I'm confused. Less of fund equity.
Right, exactly.
I'm fine with that, I, I.
I don't want to monkey around though with Peter's suggestion, which is a fine suggestion, but I don't want to encumber for debt service right now out of fund balance.
No, we don't, we don't have to, we don't have to make that move right now. But that's where I'd like to see that million and a half. If we're going to spend down to get to 11% or whatever, we, you know, they say, they say 10, we've never been to 10.
They've been always higher, yes.
More conservative.
Right.
So, you know, if you take it down to 11, it's, we've got a million and a half to play with.
Okay.
So we're dealing with the fund balance issue.
I'm trying to clarify what folks want, I mean, this, this is the question. If you, if we're funding bulky waste in the operating budget with ARPA, we would be having 280,000 dollars as revenue. I think the open question was do we do a corresponding reduction in the amount of, I mean, that's the question.
Yes, because the fund balance will be left there so that two years from now, three years from now, we will be taking 2, 2.5, 3 million dollars by spending that down a little bit to offset the debt service cliff that we're getting from the schools.
In addition to the money we have.
Yeah, effectively we haven't done.
I don't want to do the way you and Rob worked out years ago. But I didn't, I, I don't like budgeting that it's inexpensive putting it there, it's going to be there in fund balance. I'd rather leave it there where we, we have the maximum control.
I don't have a problem with it, but that's, that's ultimately what, you know, what I'd like to see future councils do.
Yeah.
Is, is smooth the, smooth the spike.
All right, David does.
I'm, I'm sorry, I, I think if we're gonna, if we're gonna shift bulky waste to ARPA, then I would rather just use, continue to use the fund balance to lower the mill rate.
Okay.
So instead of driving, instead of having an equivalent pick somewhere in between, like instead of 700,000, we're now at 550.
But that's.
So we're splitting the difference. So we can use another 150 instead of 300,000.
Yeah.
To mill, to drop the mill rate a little bit more, so now we're not spending, we're not, we're not going up an extra 700,000, we're only going up 550.
Yeah, I mean, I'm.
And we're still covering bulky waste pickup and we would take, we would now get below 0.7 mils. I think we'd get to something like 0.69 mils or something like that, right?
I mean, I'm comfortable with saying to the residents, this is a budget of 110, 133 million dollars. It's 2% increase this year and these are all the services you're getting, and you're getting the services that you expect. I don't think 2% is unreasonable.
Fairly typical.
Me either.
Um, I, I, I do not disagree with you.
I think we can get lower.
But, and we could get it lower. But then that would have a little bit less money for three, four years down the road.
Well, what if the rest of the 35 mils? How much is 0.9?
3.9.
Yeah.
2.09.
All right, do that exercise, 35 even.
We just want to play magic and come up with, you know, 34.8.
Do it 35 even and see what, I don't know what it is, yeah, all right.
So that comes up to 6.4.
That can't be right, changing it to 0.09 is another 200,000 more than that number was.
No.
So I'm fearful, we lost something somewhere.
Yeah, well, you're using 400. David was suggesting that.
Yeah, because I think your.
You have increased that fund balance.
Fund balance should go from 420 to 550, but that, but we're just trying to get to that, we're just trying to see what happens.
Okay.
Okay, right.
Now, but what happens when you make it 35 even? It didn't like that, huh?
I don't know why.
Yeah, it's a glitch somewhere. Yeah, jumps up to, right, needy, 240, and that's not right.
Well, the mill's almost 3 million, it's not that.
It's a tenth of a mil.
Yeah. And here's why, 3 million to my, because here's why it looks like that because.
Okay, I'm sorry, I'm off.
That money's coming out ARPA, so you get there without really doing anything.
Right, right.
So, to get to 35 even, no, that, that 245 is to round that 0.09. 35.09 to 35. It doesn't have anything to do with ARPA.
No, but we did, we found it in ARPA because that's where the.
Well, didn't you include the 2.80 already?
I, I did, so here's what we did, we, we trimmed 20,000 off of the cost of bulky waste expense in the budget.
Yeah.
We, and on the revenue side, it was a wash because we took 280,000 from ARPA. But we reduced our reliance on fund equity by 280,000. So instead that 700,000.
That's a wash.
Not doing a full sweep.
And, and that's, yeah, I just don't, where are, we didn't do any of those, just, yeah, tell me where you want them on.
Do you still have, does the 20,000 still factor in when you, when you're using ARPA? You know, that reduction? Because of.
Yeah, uh, yeah, I mean, 280,000 as an expense.
Right, when you, when you say, when you do the bulky wastes, when you, when you say you, you're decreasing that by 20,000.
Yeah, so this is another way to say, this is bulky waste at 280,000 dollars. But is it my budget, that's a reduction.
Yeah, because you put the. Well, we've taken it out of the budget and now put it in.
No, it's in the budget, we're.
It's in the budget, but it's in now capital.
No, it's in the budget, but we're taking in revenue to offset it from ARPA. So it's additional revenue side.
So the mill rate perspective.
Yeah, so nothing happened, right.
That's where you would, if we hadn't taken a corresponding reduction in the amount of fund balance, you would have seen the mill rate change. Otherwise we stay at 300,000.
Right, right, what we did was right now was just right, that was like, that was like just a swap to keep everything exactly where we are. So now the question is, you know, if you drop that, if you raise the 420 to something like 550, what is, you know, that.
Well, you get halfway there.
Get halfway there.
Now you're going to be at 35.0 or 35.5.
Still got to find 200,000 dollars.
That's a big number.
250,000, 245, yeah.
That's not good enough.
Well, my concern is, we may not like.
That's a lot of work to come up with, 300,000 more.
Right, but if we, but if we increase the fund of balance by another 130, that's halfway.
Well, if you decide to just use more fund balance.
Right, that's the thing.
This was just a wash.
Right.
This was like making a cliff more of a hill.
Right, exactly, no, I'm, I understand that.
Which I still don't think is a cliff, by the way.
Right, that's what I'm saying, I think we can still do the ARPA and the fund balance and still be perfectly fine.
So reduce the amount you're taking from fund balance.
No, add more, take more.
Or I mean add more.
Take more back to the 700.
Heading back to 700, right.
The only reason I'm not uncomfortable where we are, it's actually what we did last year. 1.7, this is coming out to 1.7 or 1.6, coming out roughly the same as what we did last year. I thought we took a little less than we could have last year when we had a 3.8 million dollar surplus. We only used a third of it, less than half, not quite a third. But I like Peter's thoughts that, hey, keep that money there, whether it's in fund balance or whatever we call it, but keep it there because we're going to want it two, three, four years down the road for the cliff. In addition to the money we got for the premium.
Right.
In the, the 1.4 million dollars premium.
Yeah, I mean, I, we, we guys said we could, for us, we'd get under, get under 2%. I don't, I don't, I feel like 2% is like a, like a magic number, like we should be.
Well, we are at 2%.
Look at all, look where all the increases are.
To clarify, you're, you're at 2.24%, that cell wasn't, that somehow got changed in the.
Okay.
That, that one when we started is 2.24%.
All right, how many people are going to listen to you when you're knocking on the door saying 2.24? It's 2.
Yeah, yeah, right.
Well, it's actually 2.24.
Well, I would round up if it was 1.9, I'd say 2 also.
Yeah, exactly.
If it was 1.55.
Probably if you look through that budget book, everything's 2.2 anyway.
Change that number to 3.20.
Jim and Sean, how comfortable are you guys with the 700,000 extra for fund balance?
Yeah, I mean, it's probably, it's probably the least comfortable area in the whole budget only because again, that's an area that it is hard to fill. The thing that we've talked about this a lot, the possibility of that additional 550, 600,000 that we got from the state this year as a surprise revenue is, how, I mean, well, I get, you know, we'll see, we'll see if it, if that were to materialize again next year and then the year after that, we'd probably start budgeting for it, whether they say so or not. But there's a lot of components in our revenue budget that we just don't predict with that level of certainty, but.
So you're more comfortable with the 420?
Certainly, yeah, I think that, so than 700, I mean, I was, knowing that bulky waste either way was a one-time addition to the, at least the way it was proposed. That isn't something, when it was proposed at 300,000, it's not something we had to budget for the next year. So the more of those that are in the budget, you know, then you're a little more comfortable with the use of fund balance.
Because it won't be in the budget next year.
Right, so we would, of course, it's, it's less.
Well, we've taken it out to get it down to the 420.
Right, right.
Um, but then again, I mean, yeah, it's all the same discussions we've had. I mean, it's looking at development, hopefully continued successful development in the North End and the revenue associated with that. Chunk of that is not, it's not assumed really in all of our ability and everything else.
That's true, you know, we're, we're increasing revenues based on successes that aren't guaranteed, you know, the, the police department with the fiber bill, the North End permitting, you know, we're, we're, and, you know, you get, you're a victim of your own success and you start, once you start.
But we didn't increase the budget on them.
Right.
So they supported the surplus that we're sort of applying into this budget and that's where, to the point you're making, You know, the, the question of could you do it every year, obviously, is less and the more of those you're relying on. But, you know, I, I also, I mean, we are up over thirteen and a half percent fund balance and that, our existing policy. As we're hoping to move it up to ten percent is still pretty significant.
What is the existing policy?
Nine point two, two, nine point two four.
Yeah, so we're way over a hundred.
We are, we really like, and the rating agencies did, we, we discussed and they like to see at least a ten percent. So I would, I would submit that if we adopt this budget and we agree to go to ten, we should.
I don't think since, since we've been on, we've ever been below eleven, I don't think.
No, we.
No, no.
So if we codified that, kind of even with the budget adoption, if we had motion in there, that would be kind of nice.
Yes.
I should, I should, I definitely think there should be.
Yes, we all.
So what, so right now, the, we have twelve point one percent is the projected unassigned fund balance, right?
Oh, yeah, that's right. It went up a little bit without.
It did because of the four twenty, so that's where you get the payoff of the less use of reserve. Using ARPA basically applies and it adds four, uh, three, two hundred eighty thousand.
Yeah, back into the, into the fund balance. But that, if we went, just so eleven, one more percent would be another hundred and fifty one thousand, right?
Uh, no, of the budget, it's twelve. You're saying one percent of.
Of the, okay, then, if we took, if we, we'd get to eleven percent, if we backed down to eleven.
It's around fourteen million.
Yeah.
Right.
And Peter's saying, let's, we know it's there, let's leave it there or take it and put it into debt service reserve.
Yeah, and I'm, Tim would rather see it stay in fund, but I'm okay with that, but that's, I mean, that's what I, if we're gonna knock it down to eleven percent, I want to see it go to a, to smooth the spike.
Right, yeah, right. Yeah, and that's gonna happen.
Right, I'm, yeah, so I'm only, I'm only thinking we get closer to five fifty or six hundred on the, uh, produced fund balance. Which I think is still pretty, I think that's still a pretty conservative number for what we have. And I think, you know, from what, what we're estimating, I think we could still do that and still be in, in good shape. I understand that people may, that we've talked to, we're gonna take both, we're gonna take both, we're gonna take ARPA and, you know, balance funds. But I said, if that, that's also one, one of the things I would like to see is we, that's one way to meet the concern of having bulky waste pickup. But also still look at a protect, a potential, a potentially lower mill rate. Not significantly, but at least everything, you know, any amount can help for, for taxpayers at least now.
Taxpayers, because next year, next year to most taxpayers is a calendar year, not a budget year. So next year could be September and it's in our next budget year. So it isn't really they're waiting a whole year for their bulky trash to be picked up, right?
No, it'll be, it'll be, it'll be, well, it'll be this year, right?
Yeah, it's this calendar year.
Yeah.
The last time was two years.
To get down to the one tenth, Sean, is, is basically two hundred and forty five grand.
Yeah.
Yeah, correct. It's, it's really, if you notice, the remaining cut to target right now, this is, becomes a rounding error.
Yeah.
Zero point zero zero mils from thirty five oh nine, but it's eight thousand four hundred dollars.
Yeah.
To the, I guess, just under. So if you go to thirty five, it's, yeah, so it's two hundred forty five, it's about two hundred eighty thousand.
All right. So you can get there if you just can't do what you wanted to do, Peter, it's just. Yeah, I mean, David, if you're, if you're, if you're chasing a mill rate.
Yeah.
You know, so two hundred and forty five thousand dollars is rounding error.
Right.
You know, in a, in a budget of this size, but, you know, understand that, that the next council is gonna have to come up with seven hundred grand out of, out of the air to start next year, actually two million.
Or the size of the year, yeah.
Well, but the one, the one point three, we've budgeted that forever. That's, every year we've had a surplus of one point three.
Yeah.
That's why we budget for it.
Yeah.
Anything beyond that is, you know, is over.
Has been used to make that go, grow higher and higher of the unassigned fund balance.
Right. That's bad.
So.
So where are we all? All right, a lot of us have, a lot of us have all individual.
Back to thirty five point oh nine.
Right, it sounds like that to, with, with leaving bulky waste in, with some did not want in, or using ARPA funds with some didn't want that.
I think that's sort of it. It's a little nuanced.
This sounds like we have a compromise here that everybody gave a little bit and everybody working and I think it's a good document for the citizens. I mean, anybody disagree with what we think we put on here correctly, Sean, you'll send it out to everybody to look at.
Of course.
Yeah.
Um, if we're adopting Wednesday, do we want to do a quick?
Yeah.
Monday? Maybe your first Monday, quick recap and take a look at the final lines, yeah.
Yeah.
Zoom, so long dates and.
And make sure that we've got it.
Yeah, that's.
Yeah, we could disprove.
If anybody has buyer's remorse over the weekend. Tim, can we do that as a Zoom meeting at six o'clock on Monday?
That's fine, that's fine by me, I think it's fine by me.
Actually, can we do that? Is it too soon?
Tomorrow's okay.
Well, talk Friday, you can do it.
Yeah, okay.
Good questions. Um, we did not add Sunday hours back in, correct?
Um, it's there.
I understand that, that's what I'm asking, that it's still on there. I'm just, we, we did not agree to add them back in.
Um, what do we want to do? Did we, I think most people spoke as they did want to do it, but we're not sure we can.
Could someone reach out to? Could someone reach out to see if she really would like to.
Well, that's what we'll get on Monday, I think. That's one of the open items. There aren't that many open items.
Yeah, can we look? Because I still think that's.
I, I think that's gonna, I, I think they need to add some issues managerially and staff wise, yeah, I, I.
We can, we can get an official statement from Beth, yeah, she and I have talked about it and it creates, it, it creates a managerial concern.
That's something that lots of people.
Yeah.
Uh-huh.
If that's the case.
And staffing, it's, it would make it very difficult.
Do we want to poke that there?
I'm concerned about she.
But I will get official answer from.
From her.
So let's, yeah, let's, let's find out. That'll be a Monday.
Right, okay.
An item for Monday.
Yeah.
That's what I mean, and we haven't, it hasn't been that way before. And the adoption was Wednesday, I have it down on Thursday, but it's actually.
Wednesday it was gonna be Thursday and then at the first budget meeting, we moved it to Wednesday. Are you available Wednesday?
I'm okay, yeah.
We, Tim, what do you want to do? Six o'clock on Wednesday?
Is that May or April?
April, April twenty sixth.
April.
April twenty fourth.
April, yeah, better not be May.
Yeah, that guy do it behind me.
Silence.
Twenty sixth, what time?
Twenty six. Twenty six, twenty fourth is Monday.
Right, and that would be, that's all I.
Twenty sixth is Monday.
Yes, yeah, I know.
Yeah, I'm.
Yep, one time.